Word of trust in me, September twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two. I am the chairman of the Trustee Hoggers, the Texas Association for the Defense College. First by the Trustee Pierce, and I'll read Texas.
Thank you. Pray with me if you will. Our heavenly Father, thank you for calling us together this afternoon to do your well to run this institution. Help us find the proper path that you desire for us to be on. Help us to re- oppose that we that have offended us or that we may have offended, Texas from the evil one. Look after all these families represented here today and all of the students and their extended families, including our first responders. In Jesus' name we all pray, amen.
My allegiance to you, the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic with its stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
This call in honor of Texas flag?
Honor of Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We have a forum present today, and this meeting is being recorded. Members of the public may access this data and figure it out. First item on agenda is considered approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the board of trustees, self and office. Obviously, providing the real impact.
Move to approve.
Sorry. The motion has been made to take the approval of the four minutes. Any question on that motion? All those present say aye?
Aye.
Motion to. Next item on agenda is the chairman's update. The not pending members of the public suggest additional topics for discussion or press conference. The press conference is in three minutes. I haven't informed anybody yet, so if you're interested in the end, if anybody here would like to come forward. And then I'd follow councilman by the void to come forward and give us a presentation, can you sit here?
Thank you, sir. Good morning or good afternoon, everyone. Good to see everyone. So distinguished chairman, honorable board of trustees, and defenses college. Glad to be here today. Reason I'm here is to present relevant information related to city of Colleen, our district, as well as an initiative I'd like to propose. My name is Michael Boyd, City of Colleen. I represent District Four. And just wanted to be here. A little bit about Colleen, we're at a hundred and fifty-three thousand right now, our population, spread miles of fifty-five in the city. Thirteen hundred employees and two hundred and twelve million dollars budgeted this past fiscal year, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-one. Now recently adopted a comprehensive plan to take the city in a new direction. Architectural standards, traffic impact analysis, which is in the past, related to development. And we have street reconstruction projects that are underway, including water press, which is a policy issue. Our college has funded and prioritized for reconstruction, as well as funding trail. We also recently hired a downtown revitalization coordinator. A little bit about the council, city council. There are four separate districts. I represent District Four, which is the westmost portion of the city of Colleen. We also have three at-large council committees that represent the entire city, as well as our mayor, Mayor. So District Four is West Colleen. This is a little important information. There's thirty-eight thousand individuals presently in District Four. We're experiencing rapid growth. The college here is in District Four, as well as Texas A and M. The airport, university, the high school, Shoemaker High School. There are five elementary schools, two middle schools, fire station, access to the creek, as well as access to Austin. Some of my priorities when I came on, I learned that we have some different issues on West Colleen. Different from the north side, from the south side. These are a lot of those issues. As councilor, I determine on the one that's most communicated after those were addressed, parks and open space. Currently in the city of Colleen, we have an indecorated, one park, sorry, twenty-six parks total and four trails. Unfortunately, in District Four or West Colleen, there's only one park and there is one trail. If you look at the west side of the map, you'll see some blue dots. Those are just locations, schools. Those are not locations of parks, so we have a significant park deficit here. I would mention the only existing park is about point seven-nine acres, so it's not a large park at all. So how did we get here? Staff didn't plan for new parks in District Four. Developers did not incorporate new parks in District Four. And past councils did not establish new parks in District Four or West Colleen. When I say District Four, I'm also representing our West Colleen. So where we're heading, the city of Colleen recently adopted a Parks Master Plan. It was a framework for developing new parks. I was working on park management dedication development board, it's president, to guarantee the allotment of tracks of land for future parks. And then myself, as councilor, I'm working on an initiative, excuse me, to introduce new parks, trails, and open spaces to West Colleen. So a little bit about the Parks Master Plan, this was adopted this year, February. I was a part of the Parks Master Plan work group just before I came on council because this was important to me. That document references park condition, growth, operation, maintenance, and its framework as important investment. Future parks and existing parks in that. We'll also note, the city of Colleen allotted over four-point-five million dollars to our legacy parks, which are located on the north side of town. They couldn't get a lot into District Four if they don't really have established parks. And the only park that we could have is connected with the school district, and that requires, I mean, to be screened and other, other example. So there are future parks planned for West Colleen. These are going to be years in the future. On the right side is the west side, regional park. This will be located in the eastern portion of Water Press. And this will be an attraction for those coming from Austin, from all over the place, including our residents here. So that's very significant developments. Once again, partnership for forthwith and have secure funding, land, all that stuff. So that's going to be a positive, takes time. On the left is a joint use concept, which is similar to what we have at the existing park in District Four, the school. Where the school is located on the tract of land and the parks surround it. So this is part of the agreement, we're working with the school district to eventually hope to build out that there's going to be models that they will go forward with. One of those, unfortunately, will not be in West Colleen, which is a district that's leaving us still with the parking. So as representative for West Colleen, I determined to look into adding, introducing new parks, trails, and open spaces with support of the council. The residents have been very vocal consistently about the need and the desire for access to open space. And so I'll be working on that initiative. So that initiative is this, and this is the proposal for your consideration. This is, there's no existing evidence. This is just a concept. It's something you think is for consideration. So it's a dedicated park space used by both parties, which means the need complements mission, both parties. Why Central Texas College? Strategic location. You guys have a wonderful brand. Medium access to I fourteen, folks who are traveling, proximity to Fort Hood, folks who are off the creek. Neighborhood carcass code, you have existing, you have nature trail. You have U R A community institution. You have an existing student population, and you have land available. And you have existing recreational features. So it's not a good, we started from scratch. So what more or less does this look? The concept is Eagle Park. The idea is to use the mascot that you exist in. And to name the park after the mascot, with the park being located here on the campus. A shared use destination for recreation where you're not just serving students or those who have to come here. This becomes a destination where you can benefit the students, families, soldiers, veterans, children, healthcare professionals, visitors, community, alumni, tourists, youth, and prospective students, a draw to the university. Now what type of park would this perhaps look like? So apart from introduction of outdoor courts, outdoor study option, whatever that looks like. Children's playground, walking trail extension, lake recreation, outdoor pavilion, vegetarian binges, and nature trail connection. This is about thirty acres of land that you guys have, actually, just sold. Of course, the college will determine where it would like to have this park and the size of the park. This is just the concept. So what does it look like? Who would be responsible for what? How would we make this work? Should we determine it forward? It would be negotiable to an agreement, of course. For the college, I imagine the college would be responsible for the infrastructure, all the land, saving. Being a team on the debt, this, the city would be responsible potentially for the park planning, the capital improvements, the park improvements, right? As well as the park equipment maintenance. These things, again, will be agreed. And the last point I have for you, just a few texts on parks and government economy. Growing urbanism is making quality of life relative, as we know with COVID and COVID-19 from home, et cetera. Parks are designed for recreation, for contemplation, and for leisure. Open spaces contribute to active behavior and social responsibility. And parks contribute to conservation, preservation, create a sense of life value. In the end, the force of the Texas College. Parks enhance a population's active lifestyle, mental health, and social cohesion. To the board of trustees, I appreciate your time. I ask that you will consider, that you will consider this initiative. I should consider your colleagues determining to move forward with it. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Any questions of the council board?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to express my appreciation to you for your service on the city council. And we've got a lot of good people settled in Colleen, and we need to consider things such as this because families are what is special about Fort Hood and Colleen. And thank you very much. Very welcome.
Thank you. All of what I do have a question, thank for the presentation. Has staff been given this presentation or just the first public presentation?
This is the first public presentation in this initiative. So I like to do my diligence to at least make the information known before I go to council and propose this. Come back to the college if it passes.
So if you don't mind me asking, why did you bring your chancellor first before he first does?
I determined to reach out to the chairman, and I thought it would be appropriate to speak to everyone, probably to keep everything in line, as opposed to just introducing the concept and then bringing it to the rest of them.
Any other questions?
I couldn't explain it better than yourself. Do you talk to all of us and we all have the same story?
Very welcome. Thank you all. Appreciate your time.
Appreciate you. Next item on again is a council, chairman, council, council report. Chairman Opus is under the weather, and he won't be with us for a couple more days. So I'm filling in for him when he has some, please, videos put up on the screen. Oh, that's your transfer framework, you know, study discipline? Under the question that you gave me this to go forward, I'm sorry. Special policeman folder. Didn't mean sliding.
No, it's all right. I'll be back up with the photo. Good afternoon, Chairman Weaver, board members, and fellow attendees. In March of twenty twenty-one, the Texas Higher Education Corning Board adopted new rules to substantially improve student transferability, particularly for those attending, currently attending, Texas public community colleges who transfer to public four-year universities. The rules established both a new framework and a new governance committee, the Texas Transfer Advisory Committee, to oversee the development of clear pathways or fields of study to maximize our students' ability to transfer their community college coursework to their selected majors and universities. In practice, the Texas Transfer Authority Advisory Committee convenes discipline-specific subcommittees of faculty experts to develop lower-division curricula transfer recommendations. Nominations are sought, appointments are announced. To date, three C T C faculty experts have been appointed. Dr. Kara Ariaga in sociology, Dr. Tracy Cook in political science, and Ms. Burton Conrad in social work. Today is my honor to announce the appointment of a fourth faculty expert, biology field of study, Dr. Andrea Fosca. Dr. Fosca currently serves as chair of our science and agriculture department. Her August twenty-two appointment to the Texas Transfer Advisory Committee's Discipline-Specific Subcommittee on Biology carries a three-year term, expiring August of twenty twenty-one.
Can we go to our studios? Okay, first up is the Military Relations Council, the A S A Life Center, Central Texas College. Lieutenant General Sir Darwin Dawson and Lady General King from the United Kingdom. Speakers. On the left, the passengers and Captain Opus. Leading with the, the, and then on the left, checking our hands, that good job. Doug. Next picture is the training high school G R O T C. Let's let the possession, visiting colors, and maybe, very good job. A picture of, of Katie. Big picture of, uh, I'm not sure what the, the blue, I guess that's the floor of the, uh, some further up there. Yes, it's a, kind of trier floor, I guess.
Yes, sir. On the last Wednesday, the twenty-first of September, our reserve officer training corps cadets under the leadership of Mr. Richard Eaton posted forty-four Colleen High School junior R O T C cadets under the leadership of Mr. Jimmy Stewart during a land navigation training here on central campus. Led by our own R O T C cadets, the junior R O T C cadets cycled through four stations to include a sand table orientation, a pace count introduction, and a point-to-point navigation. Picture is with Dr. Edie and myself is Cadet Battalion Commander Ayla Johnson, a Colleen High School senior who aspires to retain loss.
That, that, that was media coverage, do about it, right? Salvation. Did a good sort of.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. In fact, we were the, we were the afternoon session. There was a TAM U C T visit in the morning where the actual students ran through the obstacle courses. So a combined joint experience.
And the next one up, the Black King Dawson has worked about this.
Thank you very much. On August the twenty-fifth, we held the sixth cohort graduation in celebration of the cohorts completing this workforce competency-focused program. The bottom picture is of our incredible workforce partner, Alan Wedding, as a, and a graduating student of the For Technicians of Tomorrow program, getting their tools and their toolbox to start their new job at a local Ford dealership.
And our next picture, I think, about the box, and the top is about.
It's my great pleasure to share with you two slides of photos of the best day of the year, and that is graduation. The first group of photos is in South and Waltham. Spreads are from the last two weeks. This is our six-piece officer course. This was Colonel Charlie. And in the lower-left corner, you will see now Officer Colin Davis from Brownwood Police Department. He won two awards. He won the Top Gear Award. He was also honored red. He's received an award from Professor Tommy Thomas. And in the lower-right corner, you can see Officer Caitlin Brown from Lynette Police Department. And he is presenting Professor Flip Osborne, a member of the class. And on the next slide, our recent paramedic completion ceremony. We had twenty-one graduates from this group. And in the lower-left corner, you can see a very special graduate, Alicia Rae Cora, who is receiving her certificate as class valedictorian. She returned to school after receiving a bachelor's degree in psychology because she wanted to pursue paramedic. She did some amazing things. She really was a co-lesson force for this class. She created study groups, and she helped orient new students so they could have perspective of somebody who's in the class. And on the right, you can see Cole Demlin, who is receiving a very unusual award that is not given very often, certainly not every year, but that is for the outstanding achievement award. He's receiving this from late faculty Julie Jordan. The award is to recognize someone who is a model of what a healthcare provider should be. So while he was on a clinical site, he treated somebody who turned out to be one of the program directors from another department. One of the department chairs, I should say. And he impressed her so much, he didn't know who she was or that she worked for C T C. But he took such excellent care of her that when she returned to school, she contacted Andy Summers in Health Sciences and shared what he had done as his paramedic. And so he was recognized for his achievement as a healthcare provider. The thing that everybody didn't know is that he had undergone recently two surgeries for birth cancer and had been through radiation treatment, just survived cancer on his own. But he was always face of optimism and brought his class together as something that they could all accomplish together. So she was really, really proud of him.
Workforce solution, Dean Dawson?
Yes. So last week, the Marvel Files Site Director Jennifer Cowper and I were able to participate in the Rural Employers Infused Vital Economic Success in Texas for Reinvest check signing. This event was part of the Good Jobs, twelve-million-dollar award celebration for the workforce solution role capital area. And through this grant, Central Texas College will offer information, technology, financial services, commercial driver's license, and healthcare programs to our students in the service.
And the last picture was, oh.
Good afternoon. And I know Dean Locke said that the best day of the year is graduation, and it is. But the second best day is when we welcome students back to campus. I have a couple pictures to show you. This is our Welcome Bash, Fall twenty twenty. And it happened Thursday, September first, twenty twenty-two. We had two-hundred-and-twenty-five attendees. The event was moved to the second week of class, and the reason we did that is so that we could accommodate, you know, students could settle and have more departments and things available, which was huge. That, that helped us out a lot. The theme was anime. I knew nothing about anime, but I learned a lot going through this process. We had a DJ, prizes, food, tons of great interaction with students, which is a great event, a fun time as hell by all. So that was the Welcome Bash. And this is another event that we had as part of our Welcome Week here. We have two weeks of welcome. And this is our student talent show. And let me tell you, we have amazing student talent here at C T C. We had fifteen students that signed up to participate in the talent show. And it happened on August third, the first, right before the bash. We had singing and dancing and all kinds of stuff. But the last participant that got up, and you're going to see her picture, the night before she got up there, she composed a song about C T C. Thank you for it. So that's her picture up there. Anyway, so if you ever, if you see the invites for Welcome Week, I want you guys to all come out, let me know, and I'll, I'll, I'll welcome you and take you around, okay?
You didn't, you didn't put those C T C songs up there, of course?
Next time.
You made, you made, what did you hear on the last?
Not me, it's me, it's Dawson.
No singing. Tuesday of last week, the Fine Arts Department hosted a meet the artist event for Mario Montilla Junior. The exhibit titled Gayonda contains a mix of canvas as well as ceramic pieces. Picture to the upper left is wearing a pink sport coat, the artist stands adjacent to an oil-on-canvas painting titled Blanco. Immediately below, two event attendees are admiring Squip, another oil-on-canvas painting, as well as a ceramic piece, complete with underglaze and china paint, appropriately titled Epic Dermis. Lastly, picture prominently to the right, the Punch Bunch Bunch. Punch Punch Punch, sorry, is a ten-foot by twenty-foot painting on a drop plump. As a reminder, the community is invited to view free of charge the exhibit located in the art gallery on the second floor of C T C's elevator called Library now until November seventeenth.
And one last item on the Chancellor's Board is the meeting. Read has been moved to Tuesday, October the fourth. I think that's already been set, so to provide. Back to the quick session of the board.
Make a quick comment, please.
That's it.
Someone a while ago was complimenting our students, what great students we have. And I agree with that, but also want to point out what great staff and faculties we have. So thank all of you very much. We appreciate it.
Next item on agenda is discussing certain food with industrial technology loaded purchase. They can elect a flex tech welding equipment, M I G, a welding equipment, and now two-hundred-and-nine-thousand-seven-thousand dollars.
I'd like to ask the board for approval of the equipment that we previously spoke about. Just to make our program better as a whole and the college as a whole. We're doing a lot of great things in the welding department for the college itself and also outside entities. That this equipment would do wonders for the students, welding department, and everybody else here in C T C in the future, if y'all are patient enough to approve it, approve.
Motion made, saying that it's approved of class for the welding equipment and discussion of that process. All those present a motion, say aye?
Aye.
Motion here. All of safety, discussion approved with the Chancellor's travel schedule was barred in the board document number three-six-seven. Probably a petition, they work with expensive guidelines, see. All that was discussed at the workshop. And I'm listening up as I hear of making comments, but we're hoping that don't change that schedule and we would like to approve. Motion made, saying that it's approved, the chairman tried to schedule any discussion on that particular motion. All those present a motion, say aye?
Aye.
Next item on agenda is waiting in conference room, coming in, I'm an announcement from the board members. It's called the meetings, so I'm done. The gathering, thank you, successful, we're welcome back.
Thank you.
I remember reading this announcement of the time and location of the board workshop scheduled for busy October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. And the board members scheduled to, yeah, October twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. At this point, um.
Thank you. I didn't want to interrupt.
The executive session is complete. No action was taken before. Next item on agenda is German, uh, what we made, and, uh, second. So, yeah, and, uh, both the papers motion, both.